It's 5:30. I'd like to call the meeting order of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners. This being our July the 5th meeting. At this time, we're going to stand and I'm going to ask Jerry Langley to do the invocation and Commissioner Busio to do the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time. We are grateful, God, for the opportunities you have afforded us and, God, we are thankful that you allowed us to come together one more time to do the business of your people, lead us and guide us in our decision-making, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you have a cellphone, I'll ask that you put that either on vibrate or power it all the way off. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest that needs to be disclosed tonight?
I have none.
Okay. Being none, we'll move into the agenda. Any change in the agenda for tonight's meeting? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Busio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brent. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous, Katie. We're down to the public comment and we have a total of 10 people tonight. You have a maximum of three minutes, so if I gavel you down, you'll have to take a seat. The first one I have here is Ray Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. During the June 12th, 2017 regular meeting of this board, approved a motion to refund money borrowed from the general fund to start some projects that you hope to fund from the sale of general obligation bonds at some future date. This $3 million proposed debt has not been approved by the voters. The local government commission has published guidelines on debt issuance. Manager Alligood referenced these guidelines during the recent meeting of the Finance Committee, where he apprised the committee that in order to meet the requirements of the LGC, the staff would not be ready to seek formal approval until August 2017. The Citizens for Better Government Committee has studied the requirements of the local government commission and the general statutes for the issuance of debt by counties. We think those requirements raise significant issue relative to the way in which this board has made its decision to borrow $3 million. Consequently, if the board continues with this plan, we anticipate significant opposition. North Carolina General Statute 159-13C says, "The budget ordinance of a local government shall levy taxes on property at rates that will produce revenue necessary to balance appropriations and revenues, after taking into account the estimated percentage of the levy that will not be collected during the fiscal year. The budget ordinance of a public authority shall be balanced so that appropriations do not exceed revenues." End of quote. In fairness to you, I will advise you that if this board proceeds as you are currently planning, the Citizens for Better Government will oppose this issuance of debt before the LGC, as well as potential legal action to ensure compliance with LGC guidelines and general statutes. We respectfully request this board publicly review the LGC requirements and correct the errors it has already made in this proposed debt financing. One of the possible corrections that should be considered is a budget amendment that reduces expenditures in lieu of borrowing any money without a vote of the people. This board is gambling with this budget. I say that because you are betting on the come. That's a technical term from a casino. In this case, you are betting the LGC will come through and approve this debt, and we are still a Terraceo County.
Thank you. Bill Van Staldein?
Need my name and all that?
Yeah.
Address, okay. U.S. Commissioners in the Utility Commission tell us to compromise. We presented a justifiable case as how this proposal would hurt Terraceo Christian School. It appears you want us to compromise with a company we don't trust so that you and the Utilities Commission can rubber stamp this project without making any tough decisions. We are, in fact, the victims who are being moved in on. Your June 12 resolution says to seek compromise where appropriate. It's puzzling to me since you say your hands are tied on this issue but can then tell us to compromise. It seems that if we compromise, we forfeit further legal action. It is disturbing to me that your resolutions seem to be written prior to hearing David Butcher and Alan Meyer speak, who were on the agenda. Please stand tall, be brave, show some true support to your constituents. If you allow Wilkinson Solar to build on the proposed location, what recourse do we have a school have if we lose enrollments and are forced to downsize or to close? Who will make it right for us? Wilkinson Solar, Invenergy, the landowner, or the Beaufort County Commissioners? Wilkinson Solar, on June 22, submitted a new proposal to the Utilities Commission. If they're changing their proposal at the state level, doesn't this start things over at the county level? There's no evidence that permits are in place, so what's holding you back? Please stop this proposal now. From our initial contact with April Montgomery, our experience with her have created distrust. Her statements and her affidavits tell of a timeline of contacting us and show how calculated her timing is. Her first attempt to reach out to us as a school was contacting the school during spring break while no one was at school, leaving a voice message. The seemingly calculated last-minute contact compromised our ability to have representation at an evidentiary hearing in Raleigh. After Utilities Commission urged both parties to have further communication, she made another seemingly calculated attempt by leaving another voicemail on Alan Meyer's home phone at 4:00 PM on a Friday. This message was not heard till Saturday, and we had no way to concur with legal counsel until the following Monday. Our board members represent the school as volunteers. Being contacted late on a Friday to attend a meeting the following Wednesday at 1:00 PM was not possible. From these calculated moves and our time constraints, we have chosen to deal with them through legal counsel. Any good neighbor, as Invenergy continued to describe themselves, would have worked harder to make contact earlier and have not stopped calling until contact was made. A good neighbor would have set up a meeting in Beaufort County, not in Raleigh, and would have possibly, that would have possibly allowed board members to attend a closer venue. If this shows the integrity of the parties involved, are you willing to sign off on them, building and decommissioning?
Time. Thank you. Kevin Beasley?
Good evening. I attended Terraceo Christian School kindergarten through the 12th grade, and I believe Terraceo Christian School is an invaluable resource in our community that must be protected, and we are asking you, the Beaufort County Commissioners, to help protect it. I also attended the North Carolina Utilities Commission hearing on May 22nd and 23rd in Raleigh, North Carolina. And this is a quote from NC Utilities Commissioner Brown Bland, and I quote, "Mr. Butcher and the Terraceo citizens, they know their situation best. They live there every day, and they've contributed over the years. They've developed this area specifically, it sounds to me, for farming and for living and carving out a life. And they created this school that has served a good purpose. They've put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into it. And you can tell from the passion and pride, and they're diligently following this case, that they care about it." Commissioner Brown Bland also stated, "The Terraceo community, and in particular, that school that has been brought into, that has been brought to our attention, is part of not only the Terraceo community's heritage, but the state of North Carolina's heritage." This quote speaks to the importance of Terraceo Christian School and the Terraceo community. Commissioner Brown Bland quickly identified the importance that Terraceo Christian School holds, not only within the community, but Beaufort County and the state. Acting as the oldest K-12 Christian school, I urge you to also take interest in your citizens and protect Terraceo Christian School by stopping the installation of Wilkinson Solar. I have personally visited every single office in the NC Legislature, and they have all directed us back to you, the Beaufort County Commissioners. Utilities Commissioner Gray also advised us that you are the ones we must contact in order to achieve real results. Senator Cook and Senator Boswell, we spoke with them just yesterday at the 4th of July celebration, advised us to contact our Commissioners daily in order to achieve results. They continue to say it's not too late for you to take action. So why is North Carolina saying it's not too late, but you say the ship has sailed? Why is this so? For if it is true, I surely hope this sailing ship sinks. In addition, the Carolina Journal has published an article on June 23rd since the last meeting, revealing that landowner Gertrude Ress was signed a contract with Invenergy without a notary present. However, the contract was notarized by Sarah A. Kearns. This is evident that this company has a lack of integrity, and we are asking, how are we to deal with a company that operates in this order?
Thank you. Amanda Barnes, I'm sorry. I missed you when I skipped.
My name is Amanda Barnes, and I had the privilege of attending Terraceo Christian School from kindergarten through 12th grade. Growing up in the community and attending the school helped shape who I am and my values. Values such as leaving a place better than you found it, working hard and doing your best at all times even though no one is looking, putting others before yourself, being honest and trustworthy, serving others rather than just living for yourself, and putting people before possessions. I will begin my 12th year as a special education teacher at John Cotten Taylor School in Washington this fall. I believe I put these values to work every day to make a positive impact in this community, and I am just one of many graduates from Terraceo who are doing the same thing. I'm discouraged because it's your job to protect and support this very community, and you don't recognize the invaluable role that Terraceo plays in our community. You show no concern for the safety and well-being of the children attending there or the vitality of this educational institution. It's increasingly disheartening when others outside our community, including state legislators and the North Carolina Utilities Commission, recognize their concern and have more compassion and support than you, who are our very own commissioners and neighbors. I wonder if some of you would care more if this project was going up next to Bath Elementary School, where I know some of your grandchildren attend. I ask you to have the same regard for other children in Beaufort County as you have for your own. In speaking with you this evening, I hope to make you aware of the positive impact Terraceo Christian School has on these communities and as you as individuals. Think of the ways graduating students with these wholesome values impact our county. When I was voting this fall, I was addressed by one of your wives on my way to the Board of Elections. I stopped and talked with her, and she asked why I should vote for her husband. The first thing she said was, "My husband and I have three grandchildren here, and he cares about this community." I really hope what she told me was true and that he cares about this community, not just his own grandchildren. I hope you all care about this community because if you care about your community, you won't let children be in harm's way. If you care, you'll protect our school and make decisions to help it thrive. If you care, you'll listen to our concerns and support the citizens of this county rather than supporting the agenda of an outside company that exhibits only values of dishonesty and greed. Will you stand up for an educational institution that has been promoting good in our community for over 80 years or a company that seeks to destroy it? I'm going to just briefly, if I have time, add a few points that Senator Bill Cook wrote in his letter to the North Carolina Utilities Commission. He quotes that the Terraceo Christian School has an invaluable part, is invaluable part of this community with a rich history. Subjecting the students and staff of this school to potential harm is unacceptable. Moreover, subjecting the school to the possibility of loss of students and harming its viability is inexcusable. He also goes on to talk of the potential damage of toxic materials and dangers to the children at the school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeanie Van Staldein? Jean, I'm sorry.
I am here again asking you to help protect our children, heritage, and community. The Wilkinson Solar project will be detrimental to all three. Not only will it have immediate negative impact on the county, it will also have long-term consequences. Last week, an article published in the National Review stated, and I quote, "A new study by Environmental Progress warns that toxic waste from used solar panels now poses a global environmental threat. The Berkeley Base Group found that solar panels create 300 times more toxic waste per unit of energy than nuclear power plants. Discarded solar panels, which contain dangerous elements such as lead, chromium, and cadmium, are piling up around the world, and there's been little done to mitigate their potential danger to the environment. While consumers might view solar panels as harmless little windows made from glass and plastic, the reality is, is that they are intricately constructed from a variety of materials, making it difficult to disassemble and recycle them. Solutions are hard to find, due both to labor-intensive process of breaking down the panels and to the low price of scrap." End quote. By allowing the Wilkinson project proceed, you are letting Beaufort County become a toxic waste dump. Please don't let that happen on your watch. On May 17, there was a public hearing held in Beaufort County with the North Carolina Utilities Commission. I was able to speak personally to all three Commissioners that were present at the public hearing. All were sympathetic to our cause, and Commissioner Gray gave me some specific advice. He told me, "You have to get your county Commissioners to help you." I pressed him on this and asked if it was actually possible for you to help stop this project, and he said, "Absolutely. They are the main people who can help you." I went on to ask him if he was sure that it wasn't too late for you to actually do something, and he said, "No." He said, "People change their minds all the time, and you could base your refusal to give permits to Invenergy on new information that had been given to you, et cetera. The permit hasn't been given yet. Will you please work together, following Commissioner Gray's advice, and help us? At the very least, give us a nine-month moratorium." Thank you.
Thank you. Deb Van Staldein?
This is a letter written by my father-in-law, who I've always considered to be a pillar in the community, and he couldn't be here tonight. He just said his voice wasn't, he just felt uncomfortable, so I'm going to read it for him. This is a letter concerning the proposal to build a 600-acre solar facility right next to the Terraceo Christian School. Terraceo is the heart of Beaufort County's great agricultural farm district. Terraceo means heavenly land, and it is some of the best land in Beaufort County, producing yields of corn 150 to 200 or more bushels per acre, plus high yields of soybean, wheat, and cotton. My dad and mother and 10 children left the Netherlands and moved to Canada in 1938, just before World War II broke out. Dad had always wanted to move to America, and in 1943, he was able to do so. Dad and mom and eight of us children moved to Terraceo. The two older children stayed in Canada and moved later. One of the reasons Dad moved to Terraceo was because of Terraceo Christian School. Dad and mom strongly believed in their parental duty as proclaimed in God's Word, Proverbs 22 verse 6, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." This verse was also chosen as a motto for our school. They believed this promise of God, and so did my wife and I for our 10 children, who all went to Terraceo Christian School. God has blessed us for it. Terraceo Christian School was part of that blessing. I can remember those years I walked to school. I could see the farmers working, planting, cultivating, and harvesting their crops. It inspired me to become a farmer. Also, some of my children and grandchildren seek an occupation in the farm agricultural industry. Now, what inspiration will the schoolchildren get by looking at acres and acres of solar panels for years to come? This solar facility is not only an eyesore, but is no asset to the community. We don't need it. It is a money-losing operation at the taxpayer's expense. To cover this land with solar panels seems sacrilege. If it wasn't for the subsidy, you would not see one solar facility. Who is going to clean up this mess after 25 years, and who is paying for that? I would like to know where the money trail goes. Who is benefiting from this solar operation? Why are some leases paid more than others? What is all the hurry to getting this done without disclosing all the facts to the public? I love America, but I think it is time for some common sense. God said in Genesis 8 verse 22, "While the earth remaineth, seed time and harvest, and cold and heat, and summer and winter, and day and night shall not cease; all things are in his hand. I pray the wisdom may prevail. To God be the glory. Sincerely, William Van Staldein." Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Van Staldein?
I want to talk about the economic side of the solar facility. In the last meeting, y'all brought the fact that the solar facility would bring in an estimated $80,000 of tax revenue. And the solar facility says that it'll employ maybe one to three full-time employees. Let's say on the bright side, they employ three full-time employees, and they're making $50,000 apiece. That comes to $150,000 plus $80,000 in tax revenue, comes to $230,000. That's all great, but we're forgetting about what's going to happen. That's unlikely that Terraceo Christian School will be able to stay open if the solar facility comes in right next to it because enrollment will drop. Terraceo Christian School is paying over $600,000 a year to all of its employees, which is contributing to the local economy. Now, that's just what the school is bringing to the local economy. Let's talk about taking 600 acres of cropland out of production for the solar facility. It is going to take away money from the agriculture sector. For example, an acre of corn costs a farmer over $500 an acre to raise. That money goes to local ag retailers, local insurance agents, local equipment dealers, and local fuel providers. So if we do the math, that's another $300,000 taken out of the local economy. That brings the total to over $900,000 being taken out of the local economy. This does not even include the income and property taxes that are being paid on the land by the landowner. I just don't see the argument that the solar facility is going to benefit Beaufort County economically when it will be losing over $900,000 just to gain $230,000. My two-year-old daughter can do that math and say that's not economic sense. I also want to ask, why not grant a nine-month moratorium? What do y'all have to lose? And if anything, you can prove us wrong, saying that there's nothing we could do. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Harris?
Commissioners, I have a little different perspective. There's a lot of advocates for Terraceo Christian School here, but I come at it from a businessman's perspective. I started 10 corporations in six states and come with a businessman's perspective, and it's hard to improve on what Bradley just shared. I mean, that doesn't make economic sense, but I look at solar farms as an adult fidget spinner. It's the latest fad. Everybody's doing it. It's clean energy. What could be wrong with that? But it turns out a lot, as one of the other, I think Jean shared, about the toxic waste, 300 times as much toxic waste per energy unit than nuclear. I also look at, you know, the companies that are peddling solar farms, in my opinion, are hucksters, and they're out there waving money in front of citizens' hands and tempting them to take that money. That money is a windfall for those property owners, and it's a windfall for the solar farms because they make their money upfront. You know, they're getting government subsidies, and so their focus is on getting it done, getting the money upfront, not what's going to happen, what that property is going to look like 30 or 50 years from now. People think they're being forward-thinking and helping the planet in themselves. The reality is, neither is true. Both parties are giddy about their short-term windfall without being forward-thinking enough about the end game. The solar companies, you know, are not focused on what's going to happen 50 years from now. The landowner has a handful of money, but it's kind of like a lottery winner. You know, after a few years, that money's gone, they're broke again, and now what have they got left? Their property is a toxic waste site. And what's going to happen to that? Who's going to pay for the cleanup? And also, where is that going to go? California's solar panel company generated 46 million tons of toxic sludge and contaminated water that got distributed in nine states. What are we going to do with the toxic waste of these panels when they've served their purpose? The county Commissioners, I think one of the roles of the county Commissioners is to represent their constituents, and it seems to me like to protect the unsuspecting property owner that's tempted to take that handful of cash and to protect the residents of this county long-term when they've got a toxic waste site, as well as disposing of that toxic waste, it seems the wise and prudent thing to do to create a moratorium on any new solar farms, which is what many of the counties across eastern North Carolina are doing. So that's my recommendation. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Paul Willard?
Good evening, gentlemen. I was here in 2013 fighting this same battle, but my wife and I were doing it by ourselves. We didn't have all these people that are here tonight. What I'd like to ask you tonight, Commissioners, is think of you and this thing going in your backyard and around your property. What we need is an ordinance put in place in this county to prevent this from happening again, or it's going to continue to happen, and it could be in your backyard next time. And in providing with this ordinance, we need to do it before the permits, authorizations are granted to these solar farm companies, or any other company on that fact that's trying to do something in this county. We need to put the people first and not second, third, and fourth. Quoting from a quote that was, quoting from a little thing that was done through one of the campaigns by one of our Commissioners now, I think it's time to stop the nonsense and let's get down to business. There's so much open, there's just so much land in this county that could be used for this, the old OLF property. I know it's good farmland, but it's out in the middle of nowhere. You could use some of that. You've got the VOA property out on the Voice of America Road, totally useless. Nobody even wants it. It's just sitting out there. We've also got the old Beaufort County landfill, Hawkins Beach Road, useless. It's just sitting there, dumped a little bit once in a while, but not much. County could be getting that $600, $700 a month revenue per acre. There's still so many unanswered health questions that was asked in 2013. They were never answered because there's the answer you don't want to hear. It's hard to beat the last two speakers that spoke because they spoke pretty much what most of my, what my paperwork was on tonight. What we need to do is we've got to stop these big corporations from sneaking in under the radar and giving these Pearl Harbor attacks to the counties. And we're not the only county. There's some more being hit, too. But until we put ordinances, zoning, whatever you want to call it, in place in this county, we can continue to have this. It's going to get worse and worse. When I was, when I did mine with the Utilities Commission, there was a bunch of people When I was up, when I did mine with the Utilities Commission, there was a bunch of people that were for the solar companies, because they were, of course, they were benefiting from it in a lot of ways. One just happened to be one of our leaders in the Chamber of Commerce. She got up and spoke, and oh, she just told how many millions?
Excuse me, Paul.
Hello, I'm Amy Fire. I'm going to be-
Excuse me. But he was, thank you.
I'm Amy Fire. I have lived in Beaufort County for 12 years now. My husband and I chose this place because when it was time for us to start a family, it was such an amazing family community. It seemed so supportive. It seemed like it was growing. So today, I would like to see, I would like my girls to speak for me and let you guys hear from two young Beaufort County, Washington residents. This is my first. And if you don't mind, she's a little short. If it's okay, she can sit right here.
That's fine.
Hello, my name is Lily E. Frye. I live in Smallerton, Washington. I'm a student, and I'm a senior at Christian School. I'm a sophomore at Christy Christian School. This is my elementary, Evan John Kuntz. On August 17th, 2017, I'll begin my second year at Terracya Christian School in Beaufort. This school has been a huge change for my family and me. In the third grade, I was placed on lockout, and there was a terrible tragedy right beside my school. I was so close to the playground. We heard the gunshot. So I know firsthand that it is important to be very careful with your school surroundings. This way, this was when my mom and dad decided that they wanted to put Christy as the center of my education, and me and my sister are not the church. I'm so thankful to have this school as an option for my Beaufort County children. However, now I'm scared for the future of my school. I'm scared that there will be solar panels that surround where I play. I'm scared my friends will go to other schools, because they are not sure what can happen when they're so close to these panels every day. I'm scared that I will lose the school I love. My school teaches me to set an example of what I, and what I want the world to know about. Beaufort County should set an example of supporting its schools and its citizens, and I know we do not want to be one of the few places to allow solar panels beside the school and take the screwless. My favorite and I, my friends and I should be worth fighting for. I may be small, but we are. Please, commissioners, support our school, family, and friends of Beaufort County. Thank you for letting me speak, and I hope you support us.
Hello, my name is Lily E. Frye. I'm a freshman at Beaufort County. I am seven years old, and I live in Little Washington. I will be in second grade at Terracya Christian School. This year, I really like it there. When the first, when I first learned about Terracya Christian School, I knew I wanted to go there until I graduated high school. I want to learn about Christ every day and be able to attend the same school as my sister. When I heard about the solar panels, it scared me. I'm scared that my friends will be in danger. I'm scared that my friends will no longer go to my school. I'm scared that my school will close, and I won't be able to graduate from Terracya Christian School. However, Terracya has taught me to pray, to pray and have faith in God and stand up for what you believe in. I have prayed, and I have faithed that my parents, my school, and my community, including the commissioners, will do all they can to protect us. My mom told me that commissioners can help save this school. So please, Mr. Commissioner, I ask that you would, that you can to help protect this school.
Thank you. If anyone would like to leave, we'll give you that opportunity, or you can stay through the rest of the meeting. Let's see, we're down to items for discussion. I'm sorry.
Consent.
Items for consent. Yes.
Yeah. He's a great man. If I was to be 10 minutes, ran off Beaufort, went to Paul, and they'd be happy.
Okay, we're down to item number F, items for consent. Is there any item that you would like to pull out for decision and further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would need to make a change in the meeting minutes. I changed one, I messed up one of the votes for the resolution opposing partisan board of educational elections. Commissioner Richardson actually voted no. Commissioner Busio voted yes, and I'll reflect this in official minutes.
Seth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're both ready?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the items for consent?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the consent items, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Vote six to one. Okay, down to items for discussion. The first one on here is Beaufort County Address and Ordinance Update. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, in the last meeting, we announced this needed to be an agenda item. We've got some problems with maintaining our addressing system. Now, we have several departments that are involved in addressing, like EMS and the Sheriff's Department. We have also, in the past, issued some street names to driveways, and the clerk has made, I think, available to all of you, the addressing ordinance.
Yes.
I've talked to Chef Lachlan, who handles this, and I think that we need to get a committee of county stakeholders that are involved in this, like the Sheriff's Department, EMS, and whoever else you want. And we all need to sit down and go through this addressing stuff and make sure that we have a, that everybody is on board with practices, plus, we probably need to revise the ordinance to modernize it, because it was first passed in 1993.
The-
Adam, I agree with Mr. Commissioner Richardson and be happy to put together a committee of folks to take a good look at this ordinance. Well, like you said, it was adopted in '93. Probably has some room for modernization. I've spoken with staff of the Sheriff's Department. They're certainly on board with this effort as well.
It's 24 years old. Do you want to discuss the representation of the Sheriff's Department 911?
EMS, 911.
Emergency services.
Tax department needs to be involved, because they're involved with addressing.
Fire department.
Fire department, yeah. Anybody else you can think of?
Okay. Seth, are you going to pull together those names for us?
Yes, sir. With y'all's blessing, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. And if you've got a name you want considered, then just shoot Brian or Seth an email. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to be on that committee when it's put together, because I have a lot of knowledge about.
Okay. Will you add him?
Absolutely.
As a commissioner's representative?
Yes, sir.
All right. Was that it?
Yes, sir. Just in case there are any other questions.
Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we're down to the Finance Committee report. That's you, Anita.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee did meet on June 20, 2017. The committee members that were present were Chairman Waters, Commissioner Brennan, Brian Alligood, and myself. The first item was giving the committee an update on the sales tax audit that the North Carolina Department of Revenue is conducting. If you'll remember back in March, I told you that I was notified by the state that we would be audited for a period of three years for our sales tax. The state did request certain reports from us for that three-year period. On April 6, we did email those reports to the state. As of our committee meeting on June 20, I had not heard back from the state, so there was a period of about, what, two and a half months that went by when I didn't hear anything. So I was hoping they really forgot about it. But of course, we knew that wouldn't be the case. So in fact, just a couple of days later, on June 26, they did email us and say that they had gotten our reports, and they actually made a selection of about 100 invoices that they wanted to review. So we're currently in the process of pulling those invoices, and we should be able to send those to them by the end of next week. And then we'll see what happens after that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Yes.
They're auditing, because sales tax is broken into several different categories, and they're auditing us to be sure that we spent the amount of money that we collected in sales tax under that particular item for the purpose.
Yeah, I think they're checking for a couple of different things. First of all, I think they're checking to make sure that the proper county's getting credit for the sales tax. And second of all, I think they're checking for the proper category, like whether it's food sales tax versus just regular retail sales tax.
And there's designated uses for those.
Yes, yes.
What happens if we're not spending all of the money?
I mean, I'm not really sure. I mean, first of all, I don't anticipate there'll be a lot of problems or a lot of findings. Now, the fact of the matter is, is that we pay about 1,000 invoices a month, so we do pay about 12,000 to 13,000 invoices a year. So we're talking about a huge volume of invoices, and I mean, it's entirely possible that somebody could make a mistake and code out that a certain sales tax goes to one county when in fact it should have gone to another. And they may catch something like that, but we'll just have to wait and see what they come back.
But that would happen in Raleigh, though. We don't send, we don't send sales tax money to other counties, do we? They collect all the sales tax money.
Yes, but we file a report with them annually, and that report tells them from which county we purchased the goods that should get credit for the sales tax.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Anita, if I understand it correctly, it's on the items that the county purchases.
That's right.
Yeah, I've got you. I've got you now. But when I said to other counties, I'm saying, well, are, you know, are we, we're doing business across county lines in some cases, right?
In some cases. Not often, but yeah, in some cases.
So would, if we're collecting sales tax for a certain purpose, and we're spending too much across the county line, what happens? Do we find a vendor in Beaufort County that can provide the same service? I mean, or do they just want the statistics?
I think what they're doing is they're making sure that the funds are going to the right county, that they're being allocated correctly. It's not that we're required to spend a certain amount in any place. There's some statutory requirements relating to sales tax, you know, the 2% and the Article 44s, where that money is supposed to be used for schools and other things.
Here marked.
Right, and we do that. I don't think that's the focus of it. I think the focus of it, of course, we'll find out when they-
Is for them to make sure that they are-
And I think that's why they're doing it county-wide, because they want to make sure that the sales taxes are going where they're supposed to be going. The distribution, because there's a point of sale, and some of it goes here and some of it goes there, so they're making sure that it's all going to the right place. And of course, like Anita said, we document where we buy things, and then they say, okay, well, if you purchase that from a vendor in Wake County, a certain portion of that sales tax goes back to Wake County, just like a certain portion would come to us if somebody in Wake County was buying something from Flanders or somewhere here. So they're just making sure across the state that it's all getting to where it's supposed to go, because it's pretty complicated.
That does sound like it's a lot more complicated than I ever thought it was. But then it's to our advantage to spend our money in Beaufort County when we can.
Oh, sure.
Under this scenario. But we can't, I understand we can't always do that.
All of the things being equal, yes, unless we can get a really big discount.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
They're also looking for purchases of like, equipment. There is some equipment that's tax-exempt.
That's right.
And that's one of the things they're really looking at. They do that with a lot of equipment dealers that sell farm equipment. I don't know what else is exempt outside of the ag committee, but I know as it relates to the agribusiness community, there are some exemptions on equipment.
Yes, and there's certain equipment that we buy, particularly in the water districts, that is sales tax exempt, but then you pay a machinery tax on it instead.
And I think part of what this is, you know, you have a new state treasurer. So I think it's him kind of putting his stamp and saying, "I've checked all these things," because, you know, they also look at the state health plan, and they're going through and confirming all the dependence on the state health plan. So I think it's, I think it's his office going in and saying, "We're going to go back and double-check everything and make sure we've got a good starting point and move forward from there." So I think you'll see more things coming out of the state treasurer's office like that.
And I don't think they're just picking on Beaufort County. They're doing many audits in our area.
Oh, yeah. Great.
Next, Brian gave the committee an update on the 2008 GEO school bond refinancing. The refunding is on the July 11 Local Government Commission Executive Committee Agenda, and Brian and I will be attending that meeting along with one of our representatives from Davenport Consultants. The next item was a discussion about a fraud hotline for county employees. Brian explained that there's a state hotline that anyone can call and file a complaint, but that the county could also choose to work with a third-party vendor to implement a fraud hotline for employees. It would be a hotline for ethics violations, fraud, and other items such as that. Employees could file the complaint online or by phone. Then the employee would get a code so that they could log in and get an update on the complaint. Depending on the nature of the complaint, it would be sent to either the HR manager, the finance officer, or the county manager for investigation. The fee for such a service is $5,700 for the first year and $3,300 per year after that. There seemed to be a consensus among the committee members that we would rely on the state hotline for now, as we have been, educate our employees about the hotline, and put posters of the hotline phone number in the county break rooms. And if we choose to take up the idea of using a third-party vendor, we could do that at the next budget session next year. The next item on the agenda was a review of the financial statements. Then after that, I gave the committee an update on the fiscal year 1617 audit. The auditors were actually on-site at DSS and the Health Department the third week of June for program compliance testing, and they'll be on-site the week of August 28 for regular fieldwork. Next, the committee reviewed the Board of Commissioners and county managers' travel for the second quarter. After that, I gave the committee an update on where staff was with the analysis of the bids received for banking services. We hope to have the analysis complete in the next two weeks, and then after that, we'll be having a meeting with the low bidder to ensure that they can accommodate all of our banking needs. And once we do that, I'll be able to make a final recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on which bank I believe we should change to. I'm expecting I'll be able to do that at your next meeting in August. Brian then gave the group an update on the $3 million borrowing package included in the fiscal year 1718 budget. We shared a list of the capital improvements for the public schools with Dr. Phillips, and we just received word back from him, I believe, today, that they were comfortable with that list of the projects that we had selected. This borrowing will require LGC approval, so we'll be completing the LGC application over the next couple of weeks. I have had a phone conversation with an LGC staff member in the debt section, and he does not foresee any problems with the application or what we plan to use the borrowed funds for. I specifically asked him, you know, does it seem reasonable that we would be borrowing this money for things like paving and roof replacements? And he said, yes, people do it every day. So that made me feel a lot more comfortable. Having said that, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves on these projects. We do want to get the LGC approval before we get too far into any of these projects, so we hope to be on their agenda within the next two months. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on September 19 in this room at 3:00 PM, and everyone is invited to attend. And that is my finance- And that is my Finance Committee report.
Any, any questions of Anita or Brian? Okay. Item number three is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners County Leadership Forum on Opioid Abuse. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And if I could, just to point a privilege, if I could take just a second to introduce a new staff member that we have with us tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Chris Newkirk. Mr. Newkirk has been named our Emergency Management Director. He started Monday. Mr. Newkirk has a long history of serving in emergency services, both on the volunteer and the career side. He has spent 15 years with the City of Greenville Fire Rescue Department, where he rose to the rank of Lieutenant. He was instrumental in working with the North Carolina Urban Search and Rescue Task Force 10 from its inception, and is currently serving as their logistics supervisor. And in addition, he served for 12 years with Pitt Community College as a Lead Fire and Emergency Medical Services Instructor. So we're very pleased to have him as part of our team. Again, he started Monday. He had to take a holiday yesterday, but that was okay. So, but we're glad to have him, and is a great addition to our team, so.
Welcome, welcome, Chris. And I apologize, he was gonna do that earlier, and I missed it.
So on to the, on to the other item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all are aware, you have attended some of the meetings, the stepping-up initiative that the Association of County Commissioners, President McClure, as you know, every year the president of the association has a topic that they focus on, their initiative that they want to move forward with. And his has been the opioid abuse issue. Several of you have been to the stepping-up initiative conference that they put on to talk about this. They have put together their, their program. This is a uniformed program that's being distributed to all 100 counties, and that they are asking you as a board to put your weight behind that and, and set up essentially a conference where you pull in all of the major players, both from the emergency services side, from the Health Department side, from the mental health side, the school officials, all the elected officials, there's a whole list, law enforcement officials, to talk about the epidemic that we're facing and what opportunities there are to address that, what we're currently doing, and what we may be able to do in the future to do that. So this is more of an opportunity to put it out there in the public. Our anticipation, I've been talking with Mr. Madison with the Health Department about when we anticipate being able to do that, our hope is that we'll have that sometime early in September. It'll give us an opportunity to plan and get everything together, get all the notifications out. We are currently working right now with some programs. The BC 360 has Mental Health Initiative Group that's working on some of those things. Emergency Services is actually putting together some training for our local emergency responders so that they know how to deal with those, with those instances in which they find themselves confronted with opioids and other types of drugs that they may inadvertently, without knowing, come in contact with. As you may have heard or seen on the news, this is an extremely powerful drug nowadays that they are mixing heroin with fentanyl and carfentanil. And there have been instances where responders have actually just brushed up against powder. I think one of the, had a police officer who had some powder on his clothes, and he went to brush it off, and because of that interaction, actually had an overdose situation from that. I mean, it is that, it is that bad of stuff. So they are working to do some training with our local emergency responders about recognizing that. It is truly an epidemic, to epidemic proportions. I mean, we're having folks die every day because of this. So just to put that out there to you and to seek your support on it, again, we will move forward based on this plan. Again, it is a plan that the Association of County Commissioners put together with a lot of, with a lot of detail, and they are rolling that out to all 100 counties as part of that initiative to try to get all 100 counties talking on the same sheet of music and pushing for the same thing, so.
Well, I'm getting phone calls from concerned people in the public, and one of the things that I don't want to see happen with whatever we do, or whatever we direction that we go in, is to create a pity party for the people who have overdosed. You know, we're, we're looking, and I think one of the things that I don't want to see us do is go in the wrong direction with this. For instance, there are babies being born in Beaufort County Hospital that are on drugs when they're born. The cost to straighten these babies out is $100,000 to $1 million. This has fallen on the public to pay for this, because obviously, not all, but a lot of the people that are using drugs don't have the money to pay for doing this. Plus, the baby will probably be on the welfare and a tax burden of all of us forever. And you can say, well, what about the mother? What about the woman that brought this child into the world in this condition? Under the present system, as I understand it, while there may be laws that she can be charged with, she needs to be charged. She needs to serve some prison time. This is a taxpayer expense. And while you can say, Richardson, you're not sympathetic, I am sympathetic. But I'm not sympathetic at all to going out with bleeding heart that it's up to us as the public, to get the public's expense, coming out of the public's pocket, to run with these Epi needles, or whatever they're called, so that we save these people. That is not our responsibility as the public. We're taking on another social program when we do this, and it's gonna end like all of our other social programs, more and more expense on the public. I'm gonna be pushing for these women that do these things to receive some jail time that bring babies into the world like this. It's a sin. It's a crime. I'm also gonna be pushing to get more Mr. Big. I got a call today from a citizen in the community, very concerned about what is going on and how rapid this is. Social Services funds a lot of this stuff. We're handing out money to people who have children, that the parents, grandparents of the, of the woman are taking care of the children, and they're drawing down public funds, and they're using these funds to stay on drugs and to finance other activities that they shouldn't be financing. One of the things that I think we should be doing, and I think it may be coming down from the administration, if you're getting a check, you're also getting a drug test. And if you're on drugs, you're not getting any more money, and we're gonna take your children away from you. That serves humanity. I am totally opposed to what I see beginning to be a bleeding-heart program that's only gonna take money away from taxpayers to fund it for these poor people who have made these mistakes. Well, there are a whole lot of other people out there who have the backbone and intestinal fortitude to stay away from drugs and never get hooked on the things to begin with. Those are the people I'm supporting. I am not supporting the criminals.
Commissioner Buzzio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned that the opioids and the problem we're having in the United States, and that's true. And you mentioned heroin mixed with fentanyl. And my understanding is, from some of my friends in the agencies, that a lot of that fentanyl is coming in from China and Mexico, and it's being mixed with the products. But also in the letter, and you mentioned about prescription drugs, which, over the years, when you begin to rank the drugs by the 20 most abused drugs in the country, you usually see that about 14% to 15% of the drugs abused in the United States are actually pharmaceutically-made products in, in the United States that cause most of the injuries. Maybe not all the deaths, but a lot of the injuries. So I'm hoping as we move forward on this, this program, that we look not only at the illicit side, but also look at the illicit side and the preventative programs that we can put in place. So I think it's very important that, as we put together this forum and these discussions, that we not only include the health and the law enforcement in the county, but we also bring in representatives of maybe the medical association. We include pharmacists, physicians, maybe nursing. Some of the things we can look at, working with the licensing boards in the state, is CE programs for our professional staff so that we... And I'm not accusing anybody in the county, like the physicians or the pharmacists or nurses or anything wrong, but helping them to identify what a drug seeker is. Because we have a lot of drug seekers throughout the United States that will go out and seek these drugs. There's programs called Stump the Doctor, and they'll use amputees. So there's a lot of these programs, there's programs out there that, that we could, we can assist with, and it won't cost us, hopefully it won't cost us much money at all. But there's things we should look at, and not only concentrate on the illicit, but also the illicit substances as we move forward, if we move forward on this program.
Commissioner Langley.
First of all, I asked the clerk, I sent you a link, y'all dispersed that for me from Trillian.
We did, and in fact, we got a meeting scheduled Monday with the Community College, with Health Department, to talk about the opportunity to apply for that piece. You may, are you talking about the grant, or are you talking about the, the stuff from Dave that had the specific incidences from 15?
The grants.
The grant, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Okay. And the other thing is, I want to say this, Commissioner Richardson said one thing that was true. For a lot of folk who get hooked, it is a mistake. There are a lot of folk who get hooked on these drugs, not intentionally. Then you have folk who just, who are just constantly looking for help. But then you have folk who just genuinely cannot help themselves and actually cry out for help, and they're in desperate need of help. And my opinion is this, you cannot turn your back on folk. When they want help, you've got to be there to help them. You've got to provide the resources to help them. You just cannot throw people away because you feel that they are a certain caliber. As long as I live, I will always say this, there are no throwaway people. Everybody is a somebody regardless of how much wrong they may have done in their lives or how jacked up their lives are. They are still human beings, and all that we can do for them, we need to do for them. The day that we turn our back on other human beings and say that we don't care, we have lost our taste of humanity.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Brian.
I agree with, with Commissioner Langley. But there's one thing that's, that everybody needs to know about drug addiction. If you're hooked on drugs and you don't want to get off, no amount of help that you, that you're gonna receive is gonna help, you have to hit the very bottom before you can go back to the top. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
I went over to a meeting in Chalka, Winington, it was kind of a community group coming together. And I think there's a way we can track the number of opioid cases that we have, because there seems to be an epidemic. It seems, the meeting I was in, for some reason, it seems to be coming out of Craven County right now, for whatever reason. So there should be some way we can track so we can get a grip on what's going on. And the last thing, I agree with Commissioner Langley. If we, we get that cruel as a human race that we divest ourselves of these people that are having a problem, shame on us. They've hit bottom, they need help, and I think this stepping-up program's a good program, and we need to take, to get involved in it. We need to do our part, because there are people that, that need help.
Is there anyone else that wanted to comment? So you're gonna, you're gonna set that meeting up for September?
That's our anticipation. Jim and I are working, are gonna work on that, and, because the State Health Director has made that kind of a priority for local health directors, so we will work on that together and, and come back to you with what we anticipate. But that's, that's our anticipation, first, first half of September.
Okay, we're down to items for presentation. Brian, you're up on the county budget information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, the reason, well, I had, I had recently, I recently was asked to do a presentation for the Rotary Club on the budget, and Commissioner Buzzio asked if I would do that presentation again tonight. So that's why, that's why you see, that's why, that's why you're sitting this tonight. Excuse me while I turn the light off a little bit so you can see. So this is the presentation that was made, and be glad to answer any questions either as we go or while we get at the end. Just a reminder, and I know a lot of this is renewal for the board, but for the, for the public, the county, as does the state and other local governments in North Carolina, works off of fiscal year of July 1st to June 30th. Our budget year starts July 1st and ends June 30th. And essentially, the way our budget is put together, there is a general fund, and there are enterprise funds. General funds are funds that are related to tax dollars. It's the, the funds that are funded through general tax dollars, where you get general fund. Enterprise funds are business-like funds, whether that be solid waste, whether it be water sewer, whether it be electric, whether it be gas, those kind of business-like functions that some units of local government do, that the funds to pay for the expenses of that service are gener, are, are, the revenues are generated by the service itself. So you pay your water bill every year or every month, and those funds come back to pay for the operations. So that's the difference in general and enterprise. We also set our budget up on a continuation cycle and an expansion cycle. Now, we take a lot of heat over those, over those names, and just to clarify for folks, when we say a continuation budget, we talk to the board about that at your planning retreat, and we simply say, what is it that you want to continue to do next year that you were doing this year? So we talk about those things, and typically we say, what services are you providing this year, and what services do you want to continue to provide next year? We ask you that question, and you tell us what you want to do. So that, in essence, is what we call a continuation budget. An expansion budget can either be a plus or a minus. It can be something that the board, a board member may say, I think we ought to look at adding this, or I think we ought to look at taking this away. Again, we look at what is a baseline from where the board said, where we are as of last year and what we're gonna do next year. Those expansion requests may come from county departments, they may come from outside agencies. But the reason we break those out is so that you're looking at your core mission to start with in the continuation budget. And then you look at these additional things, and you look at those individually. They're not lumped into the continuation budget, they're not hidden anywhere in there. They're, they're newer, different items that come in as expansions, again, plus or minus, where you hear those individually, and you as a board make a decision about whether you like them or whether you don't like them, and you as a board get done for your constituents what you want to get done for them through your budget. So you say, yes, we like that, we want to do that, or no, we don't like that, we don't want to do that. The process that we go through, the board has a planning retreat where we talk about all these things. You give us the initial marching orders, like I say, on what you want to see in the continuation budget, what you like about what you had last year, and what you want to see continued in the next year. Then we do our internal budget work. Of course, I've heard comments that we just rubber-stamp it and move it on. We don't do that. We spend a tremendous amount of time working on those budgets. And I assure you that the finance officer and I sit down with every department head individually, and we go through line item by line item, each of those budgets. And we look at historical trends, we look at where they think they're gonna roll up at the end of the year, and we look at what they're anticipating their, the normal growth will be, and for them to be able to continue providing that service that you've asked them to continue to provide. Once we do that, we put a budget together, there's a recommended budget that comes to you as a board, you hold public budget workshops where you discuss that, where we lay it out for you, where you discuss it from a general fund side, where you hear the enterprise funds, and then you hear the agencies and the departments come in and talk about their service expansion request, and you make that decision about what you want to do. There's a public hearing that's required by general statute, you hold that, you've held that, and then you adopt the budget from that. This is a glance at our budget this year. And the general fund, it's a little over $60 million. Now, in that $60 million, it includes the $3 million borrowing package. So to, so to compare apples to apples, which is what we want to be able to do, we want to be able to look historically, year over year, where we are so that we can see whether we're up or down. We take out that $3 million, because, and the reason we do that is because if you were to have had a bond issue where you were gonna build a school next year at $20 million, your budget would look like an $80 million budget, because we're required to show that money coming in, in our budget, and we're required to show that money going out. But is that what you're gonna see every day, every year? No, it's not. So that's why we show that $3 million pulling out. The total budget is $60 million, a little over that. But looking at apples to apples, if you will take out the $3 million, you're a little over $57 million. Now, that $57 million is what we're calling the operational and debt service. So the debt service for paying off that $3 million... So the debt service for paying off that $3 million loan is in that $57 million. So year over year, apples to apples, that's where you stand compared to last year. You'll see that last year, your, your initial recommended budget, or your initial approved budget, was $56.7 million. So the difference there is a little over a quarter of a million dollars, or less than 5% growth. So you've had about, you've had less than 5% growth in your expenditures, if you look at...
Five tenths of a percent.
I'm sorry, half a percent.
It's, it's 45 basis points.
I'm sorry, you're right. Half a percent, I was, I, I meant to say half percent, I said 5%, I'm sorry. So it is a, it is less than 0.5%. You appropriate one, a little over a million dollars in fund balance. In the 1617 original budget, it was 919, near about $920,000 appropriated. This year, it was up 124 after your budget negotiations and, and final budget document. So it's about 13 and a half percent up from what you appropriated last year. When you look at where your fund balance is, when we anticipate, when we look at this calculation, we say, we will spend every bit of the money that you appropriate, including every bit of the fund balance that you've appropriated. Now, we typically do not do that. So there is some fluctuation there, but in calculating the number of the 4.5 million in fund balance that we estimate on June 30 of 2018, that means we spent everything that you appropriated, including all the fund balance. If that occurs, we anticipate that you'll have 14 and a half million dollars in spendable fund balance. Now, there's a difference, remember how in fund balance, you've got a greater number in fund balance, but there's restricted funds in fund balance that you have to show, there's stuff that is, that is reserved by state statute that you have to show in there. So there's this bigger pot that's by, that is by statute called fund balance. And then there is a smaller piece, and of course, Gatsby has changed the name of that a couple of times, but the, the takeaway from it is, that's the amount of money you can, you can spend if you want to spend it. The other, you can't, it's reserved, or it's, it has to be in there and you can't touch it. So that's why we show, whether it's, whatever, whatever the latest word they're calling it, but it is the spendable fund balance, $14 and a half million. That is equal to 25.72% of your expenditures. Now, you'll recall that the, the board's rough policy on that is about 35%. There's been discussion over the board over the last couple of years about whether that needs to be that high. There, the, the board originally said, you know, we're good with getting to about 25%. So that's kind of where you are. You'll see you're at 25.72 if everything is expended in the entire budget, and, and our calculations work out about right. On the revenue side, property taxes make up about $33 million of the revenue in, in the budget, in the general fund budget. That is 55 cent per ad valorem, that's on the value of the property. For every $100 evaluation, you charge 55 cent. That is not an increase from the prior year, it's the same as where you were last year. Sales and other taxes is about 8.9 million. That's a little above where we were, and we anticipate that growing, simply because of the, the general assembly, as we've talked about, has broadened that base on sales tax, what is applicable to sales tax. You know now that if you go, you could get your car tires changed, you're gonna pay, you're gonna pay sales tax on that service, and a lot of other services. For us, we aren't able to see in tremendous detail the sales, so it takes us some time to historically understand what the sales tax trends are. We track all that, but we can't say, if you do this, then we will see this. So, so we work really hard to watch that, but every time they change it, it kind of resets our base. 11.6 in restricted and intergovernmental, those are restricted revenues that come in that have to be expended for certain things, and then the intergovernmental revenues that we, that get passed down from the state or the federal government. Licenses, fees and other is about 5.1. That is where the $3 million revenue side is on the, on the borrowing packages included. So if you took the three out of there, you'd be at, you'd be at two on the licenses and fees, that's where you're charging fees, or you're charging license fees to recover some of the costs for county services that are specifically being applied to individuals. So, you know, who are using that service. It's not the, it is an attempt to help offset some of those costs, like I have a dog, or I go adopt a dog, I pay money for that. So those are license and fees, if I get picked up by EMS, I'm paying a fee for that. So it's to help offset some of that subsidy that's coming from general fund dollars. We're anticipating about $100,000 in investment earnings. Of course, that's a lot better than we've seen in, in the last few years, and we hope that continues to grow as, as the markets change. And then the appropriated fund balance of a little over $1 million. So that's what it looks like, when you put it in a pie chart. Property taxes are about 58% of your total budget on the revenue side, and I would, I would dare get, show, say to you that if you looked back over four or five years ago, 10 years ago, that was a smaller chunk, and that has been, there's been a concerted effort, as you, as you know, from the general assembly to push more services down to the local governments to let them pay for them. In fact, I recall open conversations in the general assembly several years ago, that property tax rates in local governments were too low, and that they needed to increase them, because the state was pushing more things down. And that will continue to happen. And as you know, that's one of the, that's one of the goals of the Association of County Commissioners, it's one of the goals of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and that's constantly playing defense, to try to keep the state from pushing down services and saying, we're gonna mandate that those services occur, and we're also gonna mandate the local governments pay for them. But as you know, local governments are creatures of the general assembly, and you can only do what they tell you to do, when they tell you to do it. These are your expenditures for the 1718 budget, ranked in order of largest. Of course, education, and I would say that every county in North Carolina, their largest expenditure is education, $17.6 million. Human services, 17, a little over $17 million. Public safety, 11 and a half million. General government, 5.8, and then community services, 1.8. That's how they break out, and those are typically what you normally see. You'll see education, the largest across counties, you'll see human services, DSS, health departments, those human services pieces, the, the next largest, and then public safety behind that. The $3 million borrowing package that you approved as part of your, your budget, what we are proposing is a 10-year term at, at a 3%, we've, we've reached out to the market to understand, we think we can get that for about 3%. It's using asset security, which means it's 160A financing is what we call, what it's called. And essentially what it does, it, it says, the asset that you are acquiring is the collateral for the, the person or the entity that's making you the loan. It does not require, or it does not allow you, using that type of financing, does not allow you to pledge the full faith and capital, the taxing authority of the county to, to pay that. And if, by some reason, but again, I'll caveat that by saying you can, you would never default on a loan, because the LGC will not let you default on a loan. But if you were able to ever, if that were ever to occur, it wouldn't, because the LGC would come in and take over that. And even if it did, under collateral, under security, asset security financing, that's all the, that's the only piece that the bank could go after, is the asset itself. But again, we don't even have that conversation, because the LGC would never allow that to occur. The proposed projects, and you've heard Anita talk a little bit about that in her conversations with the LGC, courthouse, the bank building, the roofing projects, the paving projects. We're feeling pretty confident about the communications tower, keep our fingers crossed. We did some, some changes with the state on where those, where those antennas were located, they were lowered a little bit on the Ponder Tower, and it has come in below 100, it's, I think it's a little over 100%, but it's not at 105%, which is the maximum. And our hope is that the state's gonna allow us to go ahead and get on that tower without having to reinforce that tower, as we talked about. All the other towers are fine, and then the generator, the modular unit for the landfill. Just a quick note, and I, and I made this point, and I think I made this point with y'all earlier too, was that although that is an enterprise fund, that modular unit at the landfill, although that is under an enterprise fund, the enterprise fund will be paying the debt service back to the general fund on that, on that acquisition, so. And again, we're talking about capital assets, and Gatsby, the governmental, the governmental accounting standards board defines capital assets as land, improvements to land, easements, buildings, building improvements, vehicles, machinery, equipment, works of art, and historical treasures, infrastructure, and all other tangible or intangible assets that are used in operations and that have initial useful lives extending beyond a single reporting period. A single reporting period for you is one fiscal year, July 1 to June 30. So anything that is, lasts over a year is, is defined as, as, as capital asset. There may have been a little confusion about your mixing the two borrowing pieces. You're currently, as you're aware, you're currently refunding some of your school bonds. This borrowing package is not two-thirds financing. There is an opportunity, under the laws of North Carolina, to do two-third bond financing, and, and I don't want anybody to get confused about that. But what that is, is you can take a general obligation bond, like a school bond, or any general obligation where you have pledged the full faith and taxing authority of the county to that bond, and it has been approved by the voters, the general statutes allow you to go back, whatever you paid off in that bond over the prior year, you can go back and reissue those bonds in the amount of two-thirds or less, without any additional work. Obviously, it's a bond, so you've got to go back to the market, so it's expensive to do that. And most folks don't do that unless they already have like a bond issue coming up. I've only done that once in my career, and it was when we were financing a school, we were doing a school bond. So we looked back to be able to do two-thirds financing, because we were already gonna be in the market, so it didn't cost us any additional, because it's expensive to go to the market and issue bonds. That is not what this is, it is not two-thirds financing. And it is also not refunding of our, of our school bonds. The school bonds are being refunded, you're doing that to get a lower rate and to save money on those, you're gonna save about $12,000 a year. That is totally separate from this piece. These are your EMS and fire districts for the 1718 budget. We talked about fire, the north side district, there was an approval to take that to 3.75 cents, that was up a little, 0.85 cent per 100. The Chaco Entity Township requested and was approved to go up on the fire side by 1.4 cents, so there's a total of four cents on the fire tax there. The Richland Township is a combined fire and EMS township. It was the, it's the only district that you have in the county, it was done by voter approval, a, a request initially by the citizens in that area, for a request to have a bond, a, a voter referendum on it. They, they did that, they approved it. That's unique in the county, because that's the only one you have. The, the rest of them were established by the board. So you still are the taxing authority, and you still are the ones who levy that tax and control that. So it still goes back to you, but that's, that's a little different in the way that was formed. They requested an increase of 2.45 cents for both the EMS and the fire, as I say, it's combined, so that total rate there is 6.35. On the EMS side, as you're aware, in the program that, that we talked about last year, and then again this year, in the Washington Township, that bumps that to the maximum of 5 cent, so it was up 50 cents, a half, a half penny, I'm sorry. The Chaco Entity Township was requested to go to 5 cent, that was a penny and a half, and then the Chaco Entity Municipal EMS went up the same amount to a penny and a half. As you recall there, you have, you, you cannot levy a tax in a municipality for a district without that district, without that municipality's consent. So when that was originally, originally done, you had a district that was outside the municipality, and then you have the, the, essentially the district that is within the corporate limits. So those two provide for the, for the Chaco Entity Township. What else I was gonna tell you about that? That's it. Here's your property tax comparison, based on sales ratio and effective rates. And, and this is a method that the state of North Carolina Department of Revenue uses to essentially have apples to apples across the state of North Carolina. So you look at the counties that are surrounding us, you look at their tax rates, and then you look at the sales ratio. And what you'll see is like Beaufort County has a sales ratio of 106.14. And what that means is, our property value assessment, and of course, we do that once every eight years, January 1 of the, of the revaluation years, when you take a snapshot, and that snapshot is what the market is at that time. And then that value holds for the next eight years, at least the way it's set up in Beaufort County. The, the statutes allow you to have reevaluation more often, but you have to have it at least every eight years. You can't go beyond eight years. Some counties do it every four years. But it is a very expensive process to do that. So you probably don't want to be doing it every year, because you couldn't afford to do it. But what that says is, our assessed valuation is 6%, 6.14% higher right now than what the market is. So let that sink in for a minute. Typically what happens, if you look back before we hit the Great Recession, we took a snapshot, and market values continued to go up. We didn't change. So you see, Pamlico County, they're at 92%. So their, their valuation is less than what the market is. And it just depends upon where you were in the cycle on your revaluation. But what happened with Beaufort was, back when, back when you did the last revaluation, the market was going pretty much gangbusters. You had, it hadn't turned down yet. So we pegged it at that limit, and then over the next seven years, the market turned down. So you see that the market is less than what your value is. But we don't go back and adjust that, you adjust it once every eight years. Typically, you haven't seen this. You, you typically see property appreciate, not go down in value. That's what's happened over the Great Recession for counties who pegged their revales at a time where the market was still high. So if you'll look, what you do is you take the tax rate, multiply it times the ratio, and that gives you what your true effective rate is. So if we're, you'll see where Beaufort County is, we're at 55 cent, but we're 6% above what the market is. So you multiply that across, and your effective tax rate is, is 58.38 cent. So you look, so it allows you to look across the counties, irregardless of when their revaluation cycle is, and figure out how you rank up. So you'll see in the last column there, among all counties, number one being the highest taxed county in North Carolina, Beaufort County ranks number 68. And you'll see our, our surrounding counties, where they rank on their effective ratio. Craven's below us, Pamlico's below us, but, but our surrounding, and, and it's interesting if you look at Pitt, Pitt's 46th, we're 68th. Now, Pitt County, as you, as you know, has a lot of tax exempt property. East Carolina's tax exempt, there's a whole lot of property over there. So, but it's interesting, it gives you a different perspective on, on looking at taxes and looking at where you are. And we move on to the enterprise funds. We have the only, we, we operate two enterprise funds, the water fund and the solid waste fund. Under the water fund, it's a little over $7 million. We have seven separate water districts. This year is the last year of the three-year program for a 3% increase in rates. The board intentionally did that, as you recall, over the last three years, based on the laddering up of the debt that was incurred when those districts were formed several years ago. So that, that, those payments ratcheted up, and you in turn said, we've got to ratchet up our revenue side to meet that, and to be able to pay for those later down the line. So that's the, this is the final year of that three-year program of raising it 3%. There's the range of your, of your water rates, with the lowest being in the Bunyan District, and then the highest being in the Pantigga District. And of course, we do that by the first 2,000 gallons, and then everything above 1,000 gallons, at a different rate. The second enterprise is the solid waste fund, that's a little, a little over $3.2 million this year. That is paid for, or it is funded by $145 per dwelling, per improved dwelling fee. It is a fee, it is a utility fee, it is not a tax. General statutes allow you to show it on the tax bill, and we show it on the tax bill, and you're authorized to collect it, as if it were a tax. You can't do that for your water side, but you're allowed to collect this, just like it were a tax. So not that we've ever foreclosed on somebody for not paying their, their solid waste fee, but it all gets lumped in together. The statutes allow that to occur. So it is shown on your tax bill. There's a little bit of confusion sometimes about what that pays for. That pays for all residential waste costs in Beaufort County. So if you live in a municipality, and you're paying the 145, it's paying to pay for the disposal of all waste, all residential waste in Beaufort County. If you're living in a municipality and you're paying a trash pickup fee, that's simply all that is, is the pickup fee. It's not the disposal fee. The county's paying the disposal fee for all the residential solid waste in Beaufort County. We also provide... We also provide 11 convenience sites spread out across the county so that people can take things to that if you're out in the county and you don't have residential pickup. And then there's a transfer station where all that waste goes to, and then it is shipped out of the county to a regional landfill. So that is your, that is your final enterprise fund. Appreciate the opportunity. Answer any questions you may have.
I'll sit down and be quiet.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Okay.
A $3 million bond issue, when that money comes in, it's going in the general fund, then it's going to be sent back out?
It will be put into a project fund. And the reason it will go into a project fund is because it will survive multiple fiscal years because you may not get it all spent in one fiscal year. So it's just like we've done that with other capital projects so that it doesn't have to come back.
Okay. One of the things that you read and hear from time to time is some, some counties look at the educational budget as a percent of the property taxes collected, not as a percent of the total budget. And the number that I saw recently, one of our counties up in the, I don't know whether it was Wake or, but it was in the Triad area, their article said that their number was 50-some percent of the real estate. If you do the math for Beaufort County, that number is 53%. That's the total educational budget divided by the total property taxes. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll take a 15-minute break.
Bingo.
Okay, we're down to items for decision. Our first one is the bid approval for the HMA 2014 elevation of two houses and HMA 2015. Here she comes. We're on items for decision number one, Katie. Lisa, you're up.
The four houses that we are here about are 153 Harbor Drive, 5485 VOA Road, 487 Ridgecrest, and 364 Mill Street. And Chris is actually going to go over the bid opening with you.
Thank you, Lisa. We had a bid opening for these two projects on June 22. We had five bidders. The, these are the last two houses of the FY14 FMA project and the first two houses of the FY15 project. So the recommendation to the board is to go with the low bidder on the unit at 5485 VOA Road, which is Dillahunt, the low bidder at 487 Ridgecrest Drive, which is Dillahunt, and then the low bidder at 364 Mill Street in Bellhaven, which is Gilbert Everett. And then Dillahunt rescinded their bid on the 153 Harbor Road. That is a complicated unit, very complicated unit, probably the most, one of the more complicated units we've ever done. And he rescinded his bid, which he was probably not going to get recommended to award both of the final units of the FY14 project anyway. So we're recommending we go to the next low bidder, which is Paul Wooler. We're just asking for a decision from the board tonight.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. Any questions of Chris or Lisa?
I just have one question. You're satisfied that Dillahunt can perform for the county?
Yes, I personally was involved in administration in Pamlico, a recent Pamlico County project that Dillahunt completed about nine or 10 houses down there. So yeah, we can get through it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Does he finish his work on time?
Does anybody finish their work on time?
Of course.
Because the answer to that is probably no. So we struggle with a lot of them in getting it done on time, but I would say he's, you know, as good as any, yes. Good as any.
Thank you.
We just got some bad news about.
The market is tough with the contractors now because there is just not that many trades out there, the lack of plumbers, electricians, things like that. Everybody's using the same people.
I got you.
So the time element, subcontractors?
Yes, yes.
I thought it'd always.
They all try to use the same masons, you know, things like that.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we accept the low bids.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're down to item number two, the Award of Professional Services Contract. Christina?
Good evening, Commissioners. Presented to you on page 201 of your agenda book is a recommendation to award a professional services contract to REI engineers. This is the firm that completed the roof assessment for the county back in 2016. And if you'll recall, included in the fiscal year 2018 budget, there were funds to complete four roofing projects. So this is the first step in completing those projects, which is awarding the design of the projects. It is our recommendation that we award that to REI engineers because they are familiar with our roofs. Again, they completed the roof assessment, and we believe that they would do a good job. Because of our purchasing policy, any contracts for engineering services that are above $10,000 must be brought to you for approval. So that is why I'm here tonight, asking for approval to the contractor, REI.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
No, it's for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to go to the next item?
Yes, sir. Again, following the same procedure. This is a recommendation to award a professional services contract. Included in the fiscal year 2018 budget were funds to complete a facility condition assessment. What this would entail is a team coming in to look at all of our buildings. They would look at the structural systems, the mechanical systems, electrical plumbing, as well as the architectural elements of the building. They would prepare a report to us, giving us the status and the condition of those systems. There would also be included in that a capital project planning schedule. I'm not sure at this time if that would be a 10-year, or 15-year, or 20-year plan. We'll have that discussion as we continue going. But they will do that, and they will provide estimated cost for doing that. So the purpose of this plan is something that we've all spoken about in the retreats for the past few years and in these meetings, of the desire for the county to have a more uniformed plan in order to take care of our buildings and to take care of our assets. Obviously, we know that we have a lot of money that's tied up each and every year in these buildings, and we want to protect our investment. And so we would like to have a plan in place so that each year, when we present the budget to you, we can show you that this is the first year of a plan or the second year of a plan. And it also allows us to update a capital improvement plan and so that we can plan for the future so we'll know exactly what needs to be done. The reason that I'm recommending Dude Solutions, and yes, that is the name, Dude Solutions, D-U-D-E. This is a company that's been in existence for many, many years. They actually started as a program for school constructions and for school maintenance. And through the years, they went from school dude to then facility dude, and now Dude Solutions is just an overall name for the company. But we utilize their work order program in the maintenance department, so we are already in the Dude family, so to speak. And so my recommendation to allow Dude Solutions to complete a facility condition assessment is so that the recommendations that they make will automatically be rolled into the work order system, so that that will be a part of our work order system, so we will have the reminders that pop up, and it will all be incorporated into one system and one program instead of us having multiple systems that we have to update. Questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion.
I'll second that.
By Commissioner Brennan, and a second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you very much.
We're down to item number four, the Legislative Session Law Update, subdivision regulations. Seth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. So recently, at the state level, we've had some legislative session law pass that became effective on July 1. In the affected things around the city and county governments, but particularly here, we have two small changes that we'll need to adopt into our subdivision ordinance. Largely, these are very minor, and I think in effect will, are both a benefit to the taxpayers, but I think that we'll probably see used just a couple of times a year. First, to the definition of a subdivision, the state has approved language that will replace the definition that we already have, as exemption from the subdivision ordinance related to settlement of an estate. And the second would be something similar to an exemption, but really more of an expedited review for subdivisions greater than five acres and into not more than three lots. Again, these are things that won't really affect us anyway. But we need to make these changes, and the process is that we have to read them into the record at a public hearing, advertise a public hearing. So we'd need a recommendation from the board to advertise a public hearing, which we can go ahead and do for the August 7 meeting with the board's approval.
Yes, Commissioner Booth?
Maybe I misunderstood. You said if you've got five acres, lot, you can't subdivide it, but make three billion permits, three billion lots?
The intent of this expedited review is to give the subdivider the opportunity to not turn in a preliminary plat. In some municipalities or counties, they'll have mandatory approval processes for both preliminary and then final. It can take up to a couple of months. In this case, they're saying, you can skip that process, go straight to a final plat. Anytime you have a tract of land between five and 10 acres, and if you do only three lots on that particular arrangement, we'll let you skip the process.
So I can, so I can, on my lot, I can go ahead and put the three plats up there? Say I want to sell my acre, acre lot. The other two, I got to go to the commission to get that approved? Is that what it's saying?
Essentially, yes. And then you, to be.
Go ahead, dude.
Well, and say, in order to be exempt, you can't then re-subdivide for 10 more years. But again, it's not that big of a benefit for folks. They can do it, they can do this anyway, is turning a preliminary plat, which around here, we can review and make a decision on in a day or so.
Well, what's going on, just as Seth said, is the legislature is getting a lot of complaints because of the bureaucracy in some of these government agencies. Pitt County, for instance, I just cringe every time it comes to go to Pitt County to do anything, whether it's the town of Greenville, city of Greenville, or the county, because it's layer after layer after bureaucrat. For instance, you have to show the nearest fire hydrant. If it's 10 miles away, you still have to show how far it is to the nearest fire hydrant. All kinds of crap that does nothing but slow everybody down, and you're sitting there waiting on somebody. So in order to fix that, what the legislature has said is, excuse me, for small developers, if you have a piece of land that is five acres or more, that has not, no part of that land has been subdivided within the last 10 years, because that puts you into a whole different ballgame, you can go in with a plat that meets the requirements of the local ordinance, whatever that is. And you don't have to go through a preliminary process, as Seth said, where you submit it, and 30 days later, they're going to come back and pick at it and give you a bunch of stuff. You can meet the, if you can meet the standards within a week, you can have your subdivision going. That's the whole purpose of this. Your three-lot subdivision.
Some places charge very high fees as well.
Yeah, review fees, and there's all kinds of stuff that go into it. So it's a way, the whole purpose of this is to expedite small developers, or even big developers, who want to say, I'm going to do these three lots because I can do this quick, I can get somebody out there building houses, then I've got to come back with the full review process for the rest of the parcel of land.
I got you.
But it's a way of expediting development.
I got it.
There's limited risk when you're looking at three lots that are totaling five to 10 acres. I mean, this is big, big, big lots, obviously, in a wide open area.
I got it.
Now, they still have to meet all the standards.
And they still have to meet all requirements, that's right.
They still have to meet all the standards.
Okay, we need a motion to put this on the August 7 agenda. Commissioner Langley made a motion. Second by Commissioner Booth. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right.
Before we do that, do we have to have a public hearing?
That's right.
Is that what you, that's what the motion is?
All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Katie, you want to go ahead with number five, no-wake zone, Battleina Creek?
Thank you, yes, sir. Recently, we were contacted by staff from the Wildlife Resource Commission with the results of a periodic review of administrative rules. It's something that's mandated by the legislature. They just discovered an existing no-wake zone on the books for Beaufort County that in talking with their enforcement officers has probably never been marked, hasn't been marked at least in several years, which means that officers can't enforce it. There's no development right now along that creek. Do the commissioners want to keep it or not keep it? Well, it's within the jurisdiction of the town of Bellhaven and adjacent to town. You've got several lots cut out that are recorded lots adjacent to this creek that could see development in the future. The town manager, Woody Jarvis, asked for to consider letting it stay on the books. It's not costing the county or the state anything. If we did away with it and then came back asking for it again, you know, the process is six months to a year to get one processed. I spoke with the state, they have no problem with this, letting it stay where it is. At some point, if you see development on the creek and they want to mark it, the town of Bellhaven will be responsible for paying for those markers anyway.
Any questions of Seth?
Make a motion to win and prove the no-wake zone or to keep it on the books.
Recommend the state keep it on the books.
Motion by Commissioner Evans, and a second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Down to item number six, solar and wind farm ordinance. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, this is just a request that the counties gather information, in particular, and this motion is from Carrotuck County, because they put the moratorium on, and I felt like we needed to educate ourselves on what happened up there, whether or not we wanted to do anything about it. That's the purpose of the ordinance, I mean, of the request.
Okay. Are you making that in form of a motion?
Making that in form of a motion, that we gather the ordinance information from Carrotuck, not Carrotuck County.
It is.
Isn't it Carrotuck, Carrotuck County, and that that be distributed to all the commissioners so we can educate ourselves as to what's going on?
Sac Chairman?
Commissioner Busio?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, Commissioner Richardson, approval or concurrence, I'd like to amend his motion. And so what it would read would be, direct the county manager, bring back the Carrotuck County's and surrounding county ordinance that are applicable to wind and solar farms, and have the manager present them to the commissioners at the August Board of Commissioners meeting. In addition, the commissioners will begin discussing, in addition, the commissioners will begin discussing at the August meeting and possibly subsequent board meetings, the existing solar farm ordinance dated September 9, 2013, to determine if the current ordinance should be amended, or the commissioners may decide to make minimal changes or make no changes.
I can agree to that, if the second can agree.
I can agree.
Great. So we don't have to do an amendment, right?
No, we'll re-substitute. No, we'll re-substitute.
Okay. Katie, you've got that?
I have a copy for you.
Subtle motion.
All right, Mr. Chairman, questions?
Just a comment I went in today preparing a little bit for this meeting. And up in Proquemmons County, which is pretty close up there, they've got two ordinances. They've got a, well, they actually got three. They've got a solar farm, is it large or small, that you can go up and take a look at. We may want to take a look at both of them. And then they've got the wind turbine, you know, ordinance up there. So they're available online.
We don't have to worry about no wind turbine ordinance. The feds done that for us.
I think the motion is broad enough that...
Broad enough.
Broad enough, yeah. That you can, you can also pull, suspend some comments made of Johnston County, which is right adjacent to Wake, too. Are you...
The only problem I, the only problem I have is we want him to gather all this information for next month. Now, we're asking him to do a lot with what's going on here.
No, I think we're asking to get the information, but...
Get the information and get it to us in a hard copy.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to clarify, what I heard Commissioner Busio say was surrounding counties. Are you defining that as contiguous to Beaufort County? I mean, I'm just trying to get a scope on this thing. We'll go, we'll call all 100 counties if we need to, but, but I mean, I'm just trying to get a scope, because if you're saying surrounding, it could be defined for me.
What I meant was, and I'd need Mr. Richardson, Commissioner Richardson's concurrence and Commissioner, is the ones surrounding the county, touching general area of county.
Contiguous.
Otherwise, you could do all 100 counties.
Right, and I don't have a problem since you have the suggestion for Proquemmons County and for Johnston County with putting them into the mix. I mean, if commissioners want that, that's fine. It's an education process.
Mr. Chairman.
Anything else he thinks is pertinent?
All right, Commissioner Evans.
I mean, there's a list online. I think if we're gonna do that, just go where the, we don't need to look at a county that doesn't have any, any solar farms or anything.
I think we just look at the ones that are in the motion, which is Proquemmons and Johnston, plus the ones that are contiguous.
All right, one comment I would make that during our public comment section, as it related to Currituck County, I've read two articles, and as I understand it, what happened in Currituck County is, one is up and operational, which is 650 acres, and the moratorium affects the real large one, which was gonna be 2,000 acres. But there is one that's operational.
Right.
That is the largest in the state, and that's 650 acres. Okay, any other discussion before we take a vote?
No, go ahead, Doug.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm sure, Jim.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote's unanimous. Okay, we're down to the solid waste fee assessment.
Well, let me describe a little bit of the purpose of this. I would just like to have, see, maybe, it may be that we get a list of the people right now who are exempted from paying solid waste from the tax assessor. I would like to see that, to see the nature of the people that have been exempted, all of the people that have been exempted so far up until now, so that we can sort of see how this thing works, make sure we get all these people. That'll also give us an idea of how many people are out there, and I know the manager already has an estimate of that, but I would really like to see who's been exempted.
Okay.
That's the whole purpose. When I said an audit here, it's not necessarily an audit. A list would be an audit for me that would satisfy me of all of the people who, up until this year, have not been paying solid waste fees.
Bobby, I've got a, my question is, can you, can you go in and do a data search as it relates to the ones that were exempt or last year?
We're working on that with Eric at Faggot. He's gonna try and get us a list of all the ones that we maybe are requesting, the ones that have been released, because what we've been releasing, we need to put back on. So that's what we are working on right now.
You had to do that anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, so...
We'd have to go back and do that anyway.
I would just like a printout of the, of the list.
We'll see what we can get to you next time.
Any other commissioners that would like it, you know, we need to have a look at that.
We'll provide it all, commissioners. Fiscal year 16.
Last year.
All right. I'm not sure that we have to have a motion.
I'll withdraw the motion if everybody, if we have consensus.
Yes. Okay, and I would say just provide that to all the commissioners when that's available. Okay, we're down to item number eight, the 2017-18 budget reduction. Commissioner Richardson.
All right, the reason that I'm making this is one last, I'm taking one last stab at this. I have a serious problem with the major change in policy that was done this year when we went, we've gone from a pay-as-you-go county to a debt county. And the $3 million that's in there is simply a way to keep from raising taxes and making people think that we're not raising taxes because we're actually spending the money. And my motion is that we direct the manager to reduce all departments except debt service by 5%. That gets us almost $3 million that we need to do these improvements with without having to do a bond issue. So my motion is, again, I'll say it again, we reduce spending in all departments with the exception of debt service by 5% and forego the bond issue.
You're saying the $3 million way?
The $3 million, well, it's a loan, whatever you want to call it.
All right. Do we have a second to Commissioner Richardson's motion? Hearing none, the motion fails. Okay, we're down to item number nine, the budget amendment, solid waste fund. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christine and I, we sat down a couple weeks ago and we reviewed the revenues and expenditures for the solid waste fund to try to estimate where we think we would roll up at June 30th for that fund, since it is a new fund. And we are anticipating that we are gonna have an $85,000 shortfall. Now, there are a couple good reasons for that. We kind of had a perfect storm over the past year. If you'll think back, we had a hurricane and nobody could have anticipated that while we were, you know, going through the budget a year ago. And there was about $47,000 worth of debris and solid waste expenses associated with Hurricane Matthew. That's the first thing. Second of all, our revenues were overbudgeted because we did not realize that the nonprofits and churches had historically not paid that fee. So we budgeted as if we were going to collect that fee when in fact, they ended up being released or refunded by the tax office. So when you add all that together, we're expecting, like I said, an $85,000 shortfall. And what I need for you to do is to appropriate funds from the general fund as a loan until which time the solid waste fund can pay the general fund back. So we will not end up in a negative cash or net position for that new solid waste fund at June 30.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, Commissioner Booth.
Is it that money recouped from FEMA?
Yes, in fact, the $47,294 reimbursement has already been submitted.
And you still need an $85 loan, $85,000 loan?
Yes, but 47...
On top of the 47,000?
No.
Okay, what do you need?
We need 85, but that includes the 47, but we just hadn't gotten it. The check has not been received yet.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The other remaining monies that we're gonna, that we're borrowing from the general fund, how long do you anticipate before that would be paid back?
Well, the fee is billed one time a year on the tax bill, and that'll probably go out in September, I'm assuming. Mr. Parker?
My servant, I hope we have...
August or September?
This is for the last week in July.
Okay.
We showed in a lot of problems with...
Okay.
But people don't really start paying those bills until, you know, end of November, the month of December, so hopefully come January.
Okay.
Now, I want to make sure that commissioners understand that 75,000 is a very conservative number. No, 75 is the estimate on, no, I'm sorry. Well, it's 85 up there, but then down under...
So we're expecting, we're expecting an $85,000 shortfall.
Okay.
Now, when we go back and look at the expense side, the hurricane expenses were $47,294. We are estimating that about 75,000 was not collected for the churches and nonprofits, and that's a guess. And I think it's a conservative number.
Okay.
So we're asking just to be saved, to transfer the 75,000 plus the 47,294. Not that we need, probably need that full amount, but we thought it made sense to transfer those two amounts added together.
Because the 47,000, we've applied for, to FEMA for a refund on that.
Already have sent that in, yes.
So we're hoping that that'll pay the general fund back.
That's right.
And then when the revenues come in from tax collection, say in the spring, we, the 70,000 will come back.
Exactly.
Okay, that's the way I thought it was.
Okay, if you take the 75,000 and divide it by 145, we're looking at 517 parcels. That's what I was trying to get to, is that the number of parcels that we think is exempt is greater than...
So Mr. Parker gave me a revenue number of 129,000. The problem is, of those churches and nonprofits...
Right.
We don't know how many people contract with a business to pick that up and take that to the landfill.
I got you.
If that's the case, then they would be exempt. That is a true valid exemption. So we kind of backed that number down to 75,000, and that is a guesstimate.
I didn't try not to get many businesses in there when I gave the nonprofits and the new churches and things that we won't pick out. This is, I think this will be, I'll make this a matter of fact.
Well, I think Brian has made the comment before, this is the first year we've had the enterprise as it relates to solid waste, so we've not really been able to perfect our budget for that enterprise. Sorry. All right, any other question? If not, we'll take a motion to...
Shall I move?
Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. The vote was unanimous. We're down to the bid offer to purchase property from the, I'm sorry, at the location of the Aurora Beach. David?
Commissioners are directing your attention to page 229. This is a bid offer from the attorney for PCS, on behalf of PCS, to purchase two lots that were determined to be owned by the county and have been owned since December of 2011. They're right at Aurora Beach and apparently are in an area that PCS owns all around it. If you look at the pictures, you can see how small they are.
And most of them are already washed away, so...
One of them's out, out in the river. About three quarters of it is gone of where it used to be. And the other one is behind it. I do not know who owns the interview piece, but I assume it's PCS.
I think they own all around it.
I think they own all around it. They have offered a total of $1,397 to acquire title to this, and as you know, upon your approval of this offer, if that's what you do, run it in the newspaper one time and ask for any upset bids. If there are no upset bids, then we will deed the property to them upon receipt of the difference. They paid $100 deposit, which is 5%.
How move we accept the offer?
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Richardson, a second by Commissioner Busio. Is there any questions before we take a vote? All those in favor, raise your right hand. The vote was unanimous. We're down to item number 11, the designation of the voting delegates for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference that's gonna be held in Durham. Katie, you're up.
I pretty much just said it. I'm a delegate for the NCAA C annual conference. This will be held in August.
I'm gonna be leaving after the breakfast, so this is gonna be at 2:30 on Saturday afternoon?
I'll be here.
Okay. Commissioner Langley will be there. I'll make the motion that he be the delegate and we need a, she's gonna be there, too.
You can be there?
You'll be there?
They asked for an alternate for NAGO.
Okay, is this the one where they ask for the cell phone number of the person, too?
No.
Is there a second to, second by Commissioner Busio? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Okay, we're down to closed session. Will you read us into closed session?
The motion is needed to go into closed session under SCGS 143-31811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to reserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body for discussing, or discussion, sorry, of existing litigation, Leary versus Board of Commissioners.
Okay, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
Shall I move?
Motion by Commissioner Busio, second. Second by Commissioner Evans. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
We're in closed session?
We are currently coming back in for my closed session. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. Got a motion by Commissioner Brennan, a second.
Second.
By Commissioner Langley. All in favor of those, please stand up.
I'm up.
Good evening.